I want to welcome everyone to the Planning Board Meeting of March 10. Before we begin, I just want to formally thank our former chair, Bill, for all your great leadership over the last couple of years. So we welcome you in a different form. Just a couple housekeeping items, because you know, some of the people who haven't been to a Planning Board meeting, this is being televised. So it's important when you have something to say that you go to a microphone and identify yourself, because Francine's also keeping minutes. The way the meeting runs is the applicant will make a presentation to the board, and the board will ask questions first, and then we'll open it up to the public. Okay, so deal with this when we go through that process. So the first item on the agenda is 197 Newbury Street.
Thank you very much. My name is McCann. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 197 Newbury Street LLC, Joe DeRusa. He's also a new manager of the LLC. And we have requested a reduction in the performance bond. We go working with planning staff and with the town engineer to determine the correct amount for the performance bond. Currently, there is a bond for $137,000. Much work has been done on the property now, between planning staff and the town engineer. The number of 14,000 remaining was the number that was being suggested, which is acceptable to the applicant. And this bond is posted in the form of an insurance bond. And so we have submitted an original rider to that bond, reducing the amount to $14,000 should this board vote in favor of that application. And that is it. We just have some minor landscaping types of things that have to be done in some form or structure. Although, it's very workable.
Okay, questions from the board? I'll start with you, Lou, on your end.
Yeah, just a question, Attorney McCann, just with respect to the amount. I noticed here that the original reduction was to $10,500. What was the difference between the $10,500 and 14,000? What's attributable to?
Town staff estimate of the work that remains. The amount that we had estimated was $10,000. And then the town usually one-sided it regarding wages. And I think there's some additional costs associated with landscaping that planning staff thought would be more appropriate.
Can I get your questions?
No questions.
Jim?
No.
Bill?
Take off.
Nat, welcome.
I came in late, I don't have a question.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the bond reduction? Do I need to read this into the record?
This is the certified that we have the Davis Planning Board held on March 10, 2020 by a motion to the man's second. It was voted. We, the Davis Planning Board, have been requested by 197 Newbury LLC to reduce the performance guarantee in the form of a decreased penalty rider to the site development bond dated March 1, 2019 by and among 197 Newbury LLC and Boston's Duty Company, Inc., and the town of Davis in the original amount of $137,000. We hereby vote to reduce the amount of $137,000 held at 30 to $14,000 for the following site work, property located at 197 Newbury Street, as-built plan 5,000, dumpster enclosure 2,000, landscaping 5,000, cleaning maintenance 2,000 for two catch basins. For a total of 14,000, funds to be dispersed in its entirety upon the completion of above referenced punch list items.
A second. I have a motion in a second, all in favor.
Aye.
And the opposition? So move.
Thank you very much. Did you have the originals for signing?
Yes. Just a second.
Was that?
Yes, just a second.
Okay, let me give that to me. Do you want to keep this original?
Yes.
Why don't you keep that? And here's a duplicate original.
Okay, without.
Would you get John to sign that, and then we could send that back?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, 75 Sylvan Street. I notice this hereby given that the Davis Planning Board will hold a public hearing at the Davis Senior Center, 25 Stone Street, on Tuesday, March 10, 2020, at 7:00 p.m. relative to a request for a major modification to an approval of a site plan submitted by Brookwood Sylvan LLC for property at 75 Sylvan Street, map set 57 lot 31 pursuant to Section 4 of the zoning bylaws. Said property is located in the industrial two zoning district. The applicant proposed to provide a new loading dock at building A. Copies of the application and plans are on file and available to public review in the menus and community service department in Davis Town Hall. Attorney McCann?
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McCann. I'm here on behalf of Brookwood Sylvan LLC. With me tonight is Vladis DeFranco, who is the asset manager for Brookwood. And also with me tonight is Ethan Fields, Fields as project engineer. And we are requesting a major modification of the previously approved site plan for the property at 75 Sylvan Street to allow the installation of one loading dock on the south side of building A. I can orient you. Sylvan Street is here. Adams Street is here. We have existing loading docks, the rear of the property over here. And what we are proposing is to add a new loading dock right here. There will be two bays within that single loading dock area. As noted in the notice, the property is located in the industrial two zoning district. This is an industrial building that's been in existence for about 70 years on this site, originally constructed back in the early 1950s or so. And we're requesting this loading dock to serve an area that has been vacant for over three years. There's about 37,000 square feet of industrial space within building A. And building A is located on the south side of the site, right here. This is building B, this is building C. And the applicant has attempted, over the last three or four years, to rent this space and has not had success doing so because of the lack of a loading dock for an industrial type of use. In fact, over the last few years, five different prospective tenants have been lost because of the inability to have a loading dock to service this area. Back in May of 2018, some of you were on the board then. The applicant did appear before this board for a modification of the site plan. I did not handle the hearing at that time, but I have reviewed the minutes of that hearing. And at the time, the board had some input, and the neighbors had some input. There was also a separate neighborhood meeting that was held at that time to flesh out the issues. Primarily, the issues revolved around noise issues, lighting issues, truck idling issues, and those sorts of things. At the end of, I'll say in the middle of that process, actually, in May of 2018, there was one planning board hearing, and input was taken at that time, and the applicant withdrew in an attempt to revise the plans. The applicant also sought tenants who maybe wouldn't require the loading dock, and that has been unsuccessful. And so what is before you now is a revision, a significant revision to what was presented to you in 2018 in an attempt to specifically address the concerns that we heard at that time. I'll go over generally, and then when Ethan speaks to you later with regard to the plan, he can go over in more specific detail. But the plans, changes that have been made to address those concerns. The loading dock itself, the geometry has been changed a bit to adjust the approach and access into the loading dock. The curb cut that in the 2018 plan had been proposed to be over lining up with the outside aisle. So the curb cut was right up against the residential district line. That has been moved over to line up with the middle aisle. So we've moved that curb cut over from the original proposal. We have added some significant barriers for both lighting and sound attenuation. We've added, the biggest item that will jump out at you on your plan is this very large landscaped area that's been proposed right at the end of the loading dock. And that is in a location where it's going to trap the light as well as sound, and will also visually block the loading dock itself. So it's kind of working both ways in blocking lighting and blocking sound, and also adding a buffer, if you will, of landscaping, quite significant in that area. We're also proposing, with the chain link fence that exists here, we're proposing to install slats, vinyl slats, so that it becomes an opaque fence. In front of that fence, there are plantings, but there are some openings in those plantings along the fence. So we're proposing to add 15 arbor biting to fill in the gaps in landscaping that exists along that fence. We're proposing more landscaping in this area, as well as directly around the loading dock, as well as around the new curb cut at the end of the middle aisle. The total of the landscaping, we're adding 24 new trees, and we're adding 108 new shrubs and grasses, 80 shrubs, 28 new ornamental grasses. We're on a significant increase in the landscaping in this area. A total of almost 3,2700 square feet of new landscaping is being added. The tractor-trailer circulation is going to be counterclockwise around the building, coming in on the Adam Street and circling around and exiting onto Sylvan Street. We're proposing wayfinding signs to make that very clear, that that is the access to all of the loading docks, the existing loading docks, as well as the new loading docks. So there will be clarity in the circulation around the site, which has been an issue in the past of tractor-trailer trucks not knowing exactly how to access the loading docks. With the wayfinding signage and the circulation, as well as the layout and the landscaping added around the new loading dock, that's going to all guide and provide direction to the tractor-trailer trucks. In addition to the items on the plan that I've mentioned, also to address comments that we heard at the prior hearing process, we have installed, and we're proposing to install additional signage around the site specifically that say residential area, no honking except for danger. There had been situations where trucks were honking to open doors and things like that. That has been curtailed by the installation of these signs, and we're proposing to continue those signage as we've shown on the plan. Last, the landscaping company, we have a new landscaping company this year who also provides snow service, snow removal, as is typical. They have been asked to be mindful, of course, during landscaping of sound and things like that. And our landscapers, and I will ask Vladis if I say anything incorrectly about the scheduling. The landscapers are scheduled to maintain the property on Tuesdays during normal business hours and three Saturdays in the spring and the fall to do cleanup, which is typical, which you will want them to do, to add mulch and plantings and things like that. And that will happen, but the landscaping will be done on Tuesdays during normal business hours. Trash collection is done Monday, Wednesday, Friday during the hours permitted for trash collection under the town bylaw, which is 7:30 to 5:00. Not prior to that, it is not collected on weekends. The snow storage areas have been relocated, as there was some question about that on the 2018 presentation, and those are shown on the plan. We also provided both after the neighborhood meeting in 2018, as well as recently as last week, because we held another neighborhood meeting last week. Prior to this hearing, we invited all over 100 of others from the Abutters list. We're invited to a neighborhood meeting that we held last Wednesday. And we provided a contact list. We did it in 2018, and we're doing it, and we've done it again, and I have additional copies here with me tonight. Should any residents have any issues with operations on the property? This is an industrial use, it's in an industrial zone, but we're mindful of our neighbors, and we have provided a contact list for folks if they have any questions at any time. And again, this is in response to comments that we heard. It's not necessarily typical for business owners to provide all kinds of contact information, but we're happy to do that. The applicant has also updated its tenants' rules and regulations. Brookwood Sylvan, the applicant owns the property, and this is a multi-tenanted industrial building. We have an updated rules and regulations that are sent out to our tenants and are enforced by Brookwood, indicating, number one, the truck delivery hours under the zoning bylaw are stated as no receipt of deliveries from 11:00 p.m. to 11:00 a.m. That's an exception for the zoning bylaw. And that has been incorporated so that tenants know that. Those are incorporated into our rules and regulations. We've added in no loitering in the parking lot for employees, no sitting in the cars with lights on and radios on and things like that. Again, this is a commercial industrial use, but we're trying to be mindful of residents and address concerns that we heard, and that was something that we specifically heard last week at our meeting. There is, of course, no outdoor audio, and no extraneous lighting, and no honking, as I mentioned, no honking in order to open doors. There actually are remote door openers that have been installed. The applicant has tried very hard to make this an attractive industrial site. Since acquiring this property, Brookwood has put over $3 million into the site of the building. And we think that it certainly is an attractive building, and maintenance is ongoing to maintain it in a good, attractive condition. This application involves basically a facade change in order to construct this loading dock area on the side of the building. There is no new building square footage being added, but there is an increase in landscaping. The percentage of landscaping on this site is 22%. It is a grandfathered percentage. The increase in landscaping, given the size of this site, it's over 15 acres, we are increasing the landscaping to about 22.5%, 5 acres in the landscaping that we have proposed. I think at this point, it makes sense for me to turn it over to Ethan, and he can walk you through the specifics of what I've given you as an overview. He can point out exactly where the changes have been made on the plan. He can speak to the boards.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Ethan Fields. I'm a project manager of Ener Swanson. We're a land surveying civil engineering firm in southern New Hampshire. As Attorney McCann had mentioned, we are seeking a major modification to an approved site plan, which really revolves around the construction of two new loading docks on the south side of the property, the reconfiguring of the parking in this area, and the relocation of a site driveway onto Sylvan Street at the bottom of the master site plan. As is shown on this plan, current access to 75 Sylvan is provided via multiple curb cuts off Sylvan and Adams Street. The site currently has 916 total parking spaces, which includes 22 handicap accessible parking spaces. There are two loading areas which exist in the back of the site, one right here and one right here. Trucks currently enter the site both off of Sylvan Street at the bottom here and Adams Street over here. They proceed in a southerly direction around the back of the building to one of the two existing loading docks, excuse me. The issue with this is they must then, in order to exit the site, they proceed around this island, around into the farthest most traveled lane, which is directly abuts the residential uses to the south. And then in order to leave through the existing curb cut, which is in this location, they must cross the existing parking spaces, which really only works because this parking lot is largely empty during the day due to the vacancy in the building. It is proposed to construct two new loading docks on the south side of the building. And like I mentioned before, we're reconfiguring the general parking around this area, and we're relocating this curb cut in order to line it up with the middle drive aisle. The project team considered a number of different alternatives in terms of the curb cut, different configurations on the island and loading dock itself. But we feel that the proposed configuration best balances the need for a loading area while minimizing impact to parking and site disturbances. Currently, or in the proposed condition, all trucks entering the site will enter off Adams Street and leave the site onto Sylvan Street. This is key in order to perform uniformity through the truck movements through the site. A uniform traffic pattern will reduce driver confusion as they move around the back of the building, around the proposed new island, down the middle aisle, which is relocated about 60 feet from the existing current drive path on the far side adjacent to the Abutters. We're also proposing a large landscape island, as Attorney McCann had mentioned, in order to essentially knock down or mitigate some of the light and noise disturbances that the new loading docks would provide. This proposed landscaped island contains significant plantings, as Attorney McCann had mentioned, including some as tall as 12 to 14 feet, which is really atypical of most new landscaping plans. Generally, we're seeing a lot of even larger plantings in the six to eight foot range. We're proposing only one new lane, which is a wall pack on the building adjacent to the loading area. This wall pack is a full cutoff style, dark sky compliant light fixture. There's no increase or decrease in building area. The project will result in a net increase of about 3,000 square feet of open space. In the proposed condition, there will be 875 parking spaces, which include 23 handicap accessible spaces in total. This is a net reduction of site parking of about 41 spaces, but still in excess of the required minimum by 12 spaces. In summary, we've tried our best to balance the proposed truck impacts to the Abutters. A more uniform truck turning motion around the site, entering off of Adams Street, moving around the back of the building and out onto Sylvan Street will help reduce driver confusion. Additional landscaping will help mitigate any light or noise pollution, noise disturbances of the new proposed loading docks. At the end of the day, it's likely going to be a light manufacturing use, which is allowed in the I-2 zone, and our client has worked over the past couple of years in order to help try to improve the site as a whole. I'll turn it back over to Attorney McCann to end the presentation. Thank you.
Prior to filing the application, we did meet with planning staff, both with Josh Morris and David Fields, and we went through the application in detail with them at that time. And it was sort of about to be complete. You do have the engineering, the planning department's comments, the building department, fire department, indicated no objections to the application. The engineering division recommends that plant sizes and lighting comply with the zoning bylaw. I did speak with Josh after receiving that, and we believe that they do. The engineering department didn't indicate that they didn't. They just made a statement that they should comply and think we do. So again, we did have a neighborhood meeting last week. We have tried to address the concerns that were brought up, both in 2018 as well as recently. And we think we've done that as best that we can, being a longstanding industrial with use in an area that's zoned industrial for this purpose. And we simply want to make good use and appropriate use of the property. So we would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, several of us were here in 2018, and I personally remember the presentation. Peg, I think you were there, so why don't you start?
Want you to start? Thank you. I'm pleased with the changes. This is what we discussed, you moved the roadway further away from the Abutters. I liked the idea, at first I didn't like the idea of the landscape island until you just explained that you think it would better block noise. I was going to suggest that maybe you try to do something along the lot line. But after your explanation, I think I like the island there. The biggest concern I have is making sure that the applicant abides by the certificate of action. We had specific things in 2007, and I actually went out to the site several times in 2018. But we had specific conditions that were supposed to be followed, such as the signs, no idling, no honking. Every time I went out, there were trucks idling right beside the lot, and there were no signs. And so my biggest concern is making sure that the applicant does comply with what's in the certificate of action, because up to now, I did, or up until 2018, I did not see that. And I am comfortable with the changes. I think that the configuration of the roadway is better than what you had before. I can't remember how the loading dock was proposed before, but the loading dock appears to be, you know, an adequate configuration. I like the ideas ahead of the signs of no honking. I was just looking to see if that was in 2007 decision too. But so I am more comfortable. I think I maybe suggested at the last meeting that you get together with the Abutters before you came back, or something.
I think I did. In the minutes that I saw, again, I wasn't involved in 2018, but I did review the minutes, and there was that suggestion, and there was a neighborhood meeting at that time after the planning board meeting, and then it was withdrawn to see if we could make some changes.
So yeah, as I said, I'm comfortable with this. And they want to see someone go out and check to make sure that you weren't complying. There should be compliance with all these conditions that we have. But I think it's a better plan than what was presented two years ago. I'm fairly fine with the changes.
Okay, and the applicant certainly intends to abide by and expects to be held to abide by the conditions. We've never received an enforcement order that I am aware of, and I don't think that has occurred. I have seen some of the signage out there when I was out. I think some of the reason, and we discussed this at the neighborhood meeting, why you do find some idling on the site, and sometimes it's not even trucks that are going here. But when you have a big, open parking lot, that sometimes does happen. The intent here is to fill the space that is empty in the building. The intent here is to fill the space that is empty in the building of 37,000 plus square feet that's, that's vacant, and you will then have employees to fill up the required parking spaces. And even though we're reducing the number of parking spaces, we still meet the parking requirement under the by law. That, that side of the site that, that has been open and trucks have been parking where they shouldn't be, it won't happen again.
They seem to like the far end down there, along the lot island. I think they were probably eating lunch. They were in the shade, and they were eating their lunch. Yeah, something there.
And that's, and we did hear that at the meeting, and that's why part of the revisions to the rules and regulations that'll go up to the tenants will specifically say, no running your car and smoking, and no running your car and having radio on, and things like that. It's on the front.
Okay. It's a little advanced.
Jim?
Well, I think it's good that you had the community outreach. I appreciate that and your efforts. I think you've gone beyond what a lot of applicants do, and this is an industrial area. I do wonder if we could still perhaps, since we have about 8% more of landscaping to get to the 30% requirement, put some additional buffering as you come from Adams Street and do the turnaround on the Pine Street side, side that might buffer some of the traffic movements, lights, and so on. Because I'm not, it's not really depicted on that plan. I know it's kind of thin, but coming in from Adams Street, is there a way to try to ameliorate some of those noise and visual concerns on, with the abutting neighbors as they are on Evans and Pine? Especially when you get down to that little island that you're turning around, I know it's kind of a thin piece there between the parking lot and Pine Street, and I'm not sure what's existing there now.
I don't think there's any plantings in here. We're proposing plantings, if you look on the landscaping plan, we have a total of 27, looks like 27 new plantings going into that island.
But I'm more concerned about trucks and lighting and noise, trucks turning around and the effect of their turning movements and light to the butters on that side.
Or here?
No, the other side.
Here?
Above.
Above.
All on there. Because they're coming in, and you're turning, and you don't have a lot of landscape on that, on that side.
All right, so we come in here, we're driving along here.
Yeah.
This lot?
Well, I'm just wondering.
And this lot are both owned by Brooklyn.
Right.
They're vacant parcels, residentially zoned, so they can't be used with the industrial use. So.
Lights are going forward on the truck, so they're actually shining straight across.
So that's why I was saying, if you were talking about over here.
I'm talking about that and as you come up and turn around.
Yeah, and that's part of what we were adding, the 15 arborite that we're showing along here to fill in, because there is a pretty mature strip of landscaping along here.
Yeah.
We would certainly take a condition that would, would fill in to the extent that it's necessary along, along there with some additional landscaping if we need it beyond the 15 that we're proposing.
We're going straight ahead.
Straight ahead.
Keep going. Right, keep going. What about there, we put the snow and put, is there buffering around there, distant buffering between the trees over there now?
There, there is some. I looked at it the other night after our meeting, and if there's room to pop a couple more arborite, we can put those in here, in that little, in that little section that, I did look, and to my eye anyway, it looked like there was some, some good tall trees in there, but we can have our landscaper look at it, and we can certainly supplement. So I think the, the thought and the condition would be that we would, we're proposing 15. If we need to do a bit more than that to fill in the holes.
Yeah.
Do some more than that. And these arborites are proposed to be pretty good sized at, at planting. We've got them at 10 to 12 feet at planting, which as you know is tall.
Thank you. That's all I have, Jim.
Bill?
Most of my questions were answered. I was, I like that you had the meeting beforehand with the butters, and hopefully that the contact information won't need to be used, but that they have it, I think is important. I also like, I had a difficult time like Peg depicting with the, the tree range in terms of the shrubs and stuff, and you had that side view so we could see the heights along the way. I thought that was helpful. There was a couple of notes from the engineering department about just some minor things on landscaping and lighting. Do you guys have any problem trying to adhere to that? You just basically mentioned you wanted two inch caliper, shrubs, minimum of five gallon plantings.
We didn't receive that. We received a synopsis that said comply with the by law, and I called Josh, and I think we are doing that.
Okay.
But what are the?
To ensure all ornamental trees have a minimum of two inch caliper at planting.
Yep.
Shrubs to be a minimum of five gallons at planting.
Yep.
And lighting, provide additional details for the wall pack on the loading dock, and provide clarification with compliance to put candles. As long as we have the details, that's.
The spec sheet is in the, the plan set, maybe engineering didn't see that.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all I have. Other than that, I think this is an improvement to the, to the site right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Daniel?
I have no basis of comparison because I wasn't part of the board when this was before the board, a couple of years ago. But I, it's always a balance between industrial use, you know, it's zoned for industrial and abutting neighbors, and it sounds like the applicant is doing his best, making great strides to reconfigure the lot and the direction that the trucks will come in and make efforts to put signage up to, to help alleviate the, you know, the concern about trucks idling and so forth. I echo Jim's concern about the buffrage with respect to plantation, and I know, Ms. McCann, you mentioned that there were shrubs and decorative grasses. I mean, that, that is more for, for aesthetics than practical assistance with the butters. So I would hope that, you know, I can't see any pictures of it, but I would hope that that would be taken into consideration, that perhaps more tall tree-like shrubs would be more practical for the butters than decorative grasses, which would go away and only, and when leaves come off the trees, then sound and light becomes more of a concern to the butters, especially that time of year. My biggest concern really is, you know, you mentioned that there was a meeting with the butters a week ago, but this 14-page letter by a butter, Susan McDonald, is dated yesterday, and her concerns are very well documented in here, and I just look forward to hearing from the butters, because this is all well and good on paper, but I can't see it from my house. And that's, you know, kind of an old saying among those of us who have worked in concrete construction, when you go home, at the end of the day, you can't see mistakes. And another thing that comes to mind and old adage is, I just hope this isn't lipstick on a pig. I leave that to the butters to know, because they're the ones that have to see it every day, day in and day out. So I look forward to hearing from them.
And I appreciate that. I think going back to the landscaping, and I think we addressed it during Mr. Sears' comment, some of the, the lower shrubs and the grasses are proposed in, in this area here, and again, the reason for that is it does absorb sound and light because it's up close to the, the landscaping area, and that's why we have the mixture, because the shrubs are down low, the trees are up high, and it's a good, a good mix. We did have a landscape person actually design that for us. As far as lipstick on a pig, this is a, this is a valuable industrial site to the town.
I agree. I just said, I hope that it's not bad, that's all. I don't mean to insult anybody.
Three million, good. Over $3 million has been put into the building since Brookwood acquired this property. More was put into the property before Brookwood acquired it. If you may recall, I assume you were in town when, when this was the Sylvania operation, and it really has been made to reflect a good quality industrial, commercial site with a variety of offices and a variety of very good tenants, with a very good act base for the town of almost a half million dollars. So it's, it's a good site that Brookwood is proud of, and they really are trying to address concerns that go above and beyond what we might hear from industrial properties generally.
Luke?
I just have, I have just a few, few questions, and I do appreciate what you've done in terms of, you know, the applicant's done in terms of the landscaping, I think additional enhancements to the landscaping that can be done, I think would be appreciated, and sort of like Nat was making a point, I have, I have concerns with respect to just the butters, the butters' concerns, and this comes sort of, you know, and I was not, you know, I was not on the board in 2018 when this was last year. I did have the opportunity to review the minutes, and just even coming from my own, you know, my own personal background, I grew up on Water Street, almost in the shadow of the old Creason Cook leather tannery. I'm not sure, I may age myself in terms of that, but, but there was a loading dock that was right in the front of the, of the building. And I understand what you were saying, you know, you said several times about this is an industrial area, I think even in the, in the narrative, it was noted that this was a longstanding, you know, that it was a longstanding industrial use, but also residential uses were long-term, were long-term as well. There are some old homes that are on Sylvan Street, as Water Street, the house I grew up in, you know, that was very close to Creason Cook. And so I think it's still important to, you know, to take the butters' concerns, you know, into consideration. And I know that, and I do have just a few, you know, questions. I know you said there wasn't a butters, there was a meeting, there was a meeting just a couple, you know, last week or so.
Yes.
And what sort of, and I know we'll be hearing from the, from the butters soon, but what did you hear from them, what did you hear from them and how did you respond?
We responded with the comments that I, I told you tonight about different rules and regulations and signage and things that we're putting into place. The concerns were, I would say for the most part, generally operational type of concerns that we're trying to address as opposed to concerns specifically related to the loading dock itself. But we're trying to address the loading dock itself with all of the landscaping and with the configuration. But I do think that everything that we've put into place, including the rules and regulations with our tenants, that some of them knew from what we heard last week, some of them have already been put into place because of what was heard back in 2018. But monitoring and making a commitment that we're going to make sure that these things are abided by, and I think perhaps the biggest thing is, I believe what was represented even back in '07 was this circulation around the site for, for the trucks. And we can sign it, and we can put, you know, arrows and things like that, but when you have, how we have set this site up and how we have designed this area in particular is going to facilitate having that clockwise turn around the building from Adams Street. Because right now, if you're on Sylvan Street and you're a tractor trailer truck, we're going to have wave band finding signs heading you down in that direction, but you're also not going to see a completely empty area that says "Pulling" and basically. So the design itself is going to help us monitor and help operationally for, for the site.
What sort of, what sort of penalty, I mean, you mentioned about enforcement with your tenants, what sort of, you know, what sort of teeth is in, in the penalty? What's, if, if there is a tenant violation, or if there's a, a truck that makes it, makes a two o'clock in the morning delivery, what sort of, what, what are the repercussions of that for the tenant?
Well, they will certainly receive notice. It's indicated on the rules and regulations that a violation of the rules and regulations is considered a default under the lease. In addition, as far as enforcement is concerned for this board, and this board's consideration of the building inspector has the right to enforce, the building inspector has the right to comply. So that is within the purview of this board and the town. And then we have permissions in each of the leases that they've got to abide by these rules. The rules are not just rules, they're part of the agreement.
Right, and part of what I'm looking at too, and again, you know, I understand you're looking at, you're dealing with operational issues, but again, what is, what's, what's taken place in the past, and I'm not trying to hold you all to what, what has happened before, but things that, you know, that, you know, when you, when something, you know, when a modification is being proposed, you also tend to look at what's been done in the past as well in terms of operations. One question I did have with respect, I know you mentioned at the, at the, at the butters' meeting, there was a contact list that was circulated?
Yes.
Okay. You know, I, I did note just from reviewing the, the letter from the butter, Ms. McDonald, who mentioned that of a, seeming like of a confrontation with a tractor trailer driver on the morning of, and when it was, when she, you know, as she states, when she reported it, she was advised to call the police. Is that, that as opposed to being, being provided a point of contact, you know, from, from the interim?
She was not advised that day to call the police. However, the contact.
It just seemed inconsistent, that's all.
Yeah, okay, wait, I don't mean to be inconsistent. And we did discuss this at the neighborhood meeting. Ms. McDonald, although a resident at the time was not able to attend, she indicated the 2018, so she didn't get the contact list that was sent out then. I make sure that she had the contact list from, from the other night. And there's a property manager is listed here, assistant property manager, on-site engineer, off-hours answering service, the average police department is also listed here, and the neighborhood outreach coordinator, Ms. Gladys, is also listed here.
No questions.
But when the comment came, because there was a tractor trailer parked on Sylvan Street, I do think that appropriate person to call when there's a tractor trailer truck blocking your driveway and they are parking the public way on Sylvan Street, gotta call the police. The police station is right there. So that does make sense. However, call this also, the contact list.
As opposed to the.
Absolutely. But you, nobody, no truck should be blocking Sylvan Street. So that, that is certainly a reasonable thing to call the police, but also call the contact so that we can address the situation. I think Gladys has even, in fielding some calls, had said, well, if you can snap a picture of the truck so that we know which one of our tenants we need to talk to about this, because that, that can be, that can be done.
Okay. Thank you. I have, I have no further questions right now.
Okay. Several of my questions were answered, and, you know, I do agree with Jim, I'd like to see a little bit more landscaping around those areas that were previously highlighted. I just have a couple extra questions around the size of the overhead door. I mean, I understand that the intent is to make this, or at least originally was looking for a warehouse-type tenant, and I know the standards of overhead doors have changed in the marketplace. What size is this overhead door going to be? And will the type of truck change based on what's going into the property now?
So we're.
Can you, I, I.
Sorry. We are.
Just identify yourself.
Gladys Franco with Brookwood Financial. And, there we go. And we are trying to market the space not to a warehouse user, because that would be just too much of a load on the facility. So what we're living is more of a light manufacturing of a flex, which the predominant amount of the traffic that you'll see will be things like box trucks, FedEx, UPS. The, we have had over the past three years, 10 different prospects. Three, we turned around immediately because it was solely distribution-type tenants, which we do not want to do, or manage a property. And then we have lost another five that would have been light manufacturing. And light manufacturing is more of, you know, the high-tech robotics, medical assembly of, of high-tech parts and tech. of, of high-tech parts and tech kits. So that's generally a FedEx, UPS type of use. What I've seen of most of the prospective tenants for that particular space have been generally normal working hours and as office hours. There was one that had a second shift, but it was still well within the time period. It was a lot.
Okay, how many tenants are there now at the property?
The number-
And do you have a mix between office and industrial use?
I do. So we have twelve tenants currently, and the one warehouse user that we have is Millifor. Millifor?
Yep.
And so they are, they have parts there that they are working, that they deliver to their location over on Cherry Hill and one other location. A lot of times the trucks that are coming in and out of there are box trucks, they do have tractor trailer trucks that are coming through for some of the main deliveries. Those are within the delivery time hours. We have another one, another tenant, they occupy about thirty-six thousand square feet. Then we have another, some of our warehouse, it's about another sixteen thousand square feet, they have the opening area. So Millifor has their own loading dock with two days, and the other grid house that's on the, on the side, they have another loading dock. Both of the current loading docks are covered, and some of the issues that we were made aware of in 2018 was the humping for them to open up the doors. So both tenants have now door openers so that they can avoid the humping. In general, I can get you a percentage, but those are really, and those are both in Building A. So then we have the remaining vacancy, which is a thirty-seven thousand square foot vacancy in A. The rest of the buildings are office predominantly for the business.
So the strategy changed from 2018. I think the original intent was to make a warehouse space, right?
Uh, I was not, I'm sorry, I was not here.
That's what I mean.
Portfolio in 18.
Yeah. And I think, you know, for the audience, this is a better use of that open space. Because I would have been concerned about warehouse and the size of the height of the overhead door and the restrictions. So, you know, I, I would echo, I think, you know, the outreach that you guys have done has been excellent. Obviously, the landscaping, the additional landscaping, addressing some of the concerns, you know, I'm pleased to see. So why don't I open up to the public? So I'll recognize people, I guess the best thing is to stand either side, behind the camera too. Can you, can you pick up people talking from where they're standing, uh, all of that? Okay. So if you don't mind, you can come over to, go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Board. For the record, my name is Stephen Castanetti, I live at 174 Pine Street, and one of the townhouses are the Fox Landing condominium trust. The townhouse that I live in backs up, sits way off the road on Pine Street, backs up to the back parking lot of Brookwood. I was there two years ago for the first abudders meeting, and the same, kind of the same issues came up about noise, truck traffic, and we discussed those, then the, the deal fell through and then went from there. During the meeting, our concern in the townhouses was the noise that was going to increase because all of the traffic that's coming in, the trailer trucks is coming off Adams and driving directly behind all of the townhouses, probably fifty feet away. We hear air brakes, we hear backup beeps, we hear people hanging out in the lot, even not, not necessarily employees, but people come in during the week. At night, radios are blasting. You know, we bought in that space knowing that there was traffic behind us. We're concerned about the additional noise now. During the meeting two years ago, commit, I don't want to say a commitment, but there was discussion about Brookwood was going to put in or investigate more soundproofing and try to isolate us a little bit more from the parking lot. Nothing was done. It's been two years, nothing has been done in two years. In October of last year, we had that big storm and blew the fence down behind our property, Brookwood's fence, blew the fence down into our property. It was the perfect opportunity to put up a different type of a fence rather than chain link. I spoke with them at Brookwood on more than one occasion. I even offered to help find a contractor that may be able to do a fence at the same cost that they were willing to spend for a brand-new chain link fence. I was ignored. They put up a brand-new chain link fence and we're in the same position we were two years ago. You've heard about the abudders meeting over and over again tonight. Yes, there was an abudders meeting. The only abudders that were addressed were the abudders that are closest to the loading dock. No, there was no regard for the people behind seventy-five Sullivan Street that are going to be facing that additional traffic coming off Adams. We're not looking for a lot. All we want is a little bit of a buffer to keep the noise down. We'll, we'll suffer through what we have now because we bought into those circumstances. But if, if they're going to add traffic and add noise, we'd like to have some kind of consideration. There's been zero consideration given to anybody along the backside of 174 Pine Street. As a result, I strongly oppose this, this petition unless something's done to help us out on Pine. Thank you.
Stephen, can you show, can you show us who you are that now?
Certainly, yeah. This is, this is the, let's see now, they come off Adams.
Where's your property?
Our property is right behind here. Brookwood owns these two, this is a parking lot that they use. I'm directly beside it. There's four townhouses that go right, right across here.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So what I'll ask is, we get comments, all the comments from the public and they'll allow the applicants to respond appropriately?
Okay. Or we can do it as we go along.
What's your, what's your preference?
I guess I prefer to answer as we go along. We, do we took any samples of the slats that we are going to do, and we're going to do those in that location as well? So this is what, yeah? And this is what?
Go ahead.
So we, we did hear everyone at the abudders meeting. Everyone was allowed to speak, and we took notes on what everyone was saying. And what, we went out and we looked at the slats because there was some comment that the, the existing slats were not as substantial as, as what they could be. And what we're proposing is a, is a thicker, heavier slot, which is going to give better sound attenuation and, and just be a little more substantial and also better for, for lighting as well. This board, the, the site plan is, as many of you remember, and I actually have plans for that particular development. And the townhouses are, here are, they were built 2017, so they're new, and they are about seventy feet back from, from the property line. And there was discussion at that time with regard to the fencing and the, the chain link fencing and the slats that were there, as well as some additional landscaping, which the site plan called for in, in that area. And so we are proposing to increase the slack substance, I guess, for lack of a better word, to have a little more substantial slats going into the chain link fence in both locations. Along here, which was at the original presentation this year, we have proposed, and then we're going to upgrade those slats in this area too as a result of our-
Other comments from the public before we go back? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, morning. I'm with the Dieter, I live at 188 Pine Street, I'm a direct abudder next to the parking lot. I've lived in my home since I was two years old, basically. Silvania and everything else that's been there, it's always been an issue. Frankly, I just want to say that over those years, they encroach more and more and more toward us. Started out as a little thing of corner Adams and Sullivan, and it's, it keeps coming our way. And when do residents get represented, or simply not, you know, represented and heard? And as far as any issues go, those trucks that come in from Adams Street come directly facing my house, there are headlights shining into our bedrooms. They don't always use the middle lane, they, they sit under the trees that are right next to the, the chain link fence next to my house and park there where they're not supposed to. They've dropped things, they've made loud noises. They just are, don't consider where they are in relation to the residents. And I like the plan that they proposed, but it doesn't really address our end of the parking lot at all because it's still gonna, you know, be coming in with more traffic. It's, it's the amount of traffic that we're ejecting at our end of both condos and myself. We don't need any more, we've had, we've done our limit. And I'm wondering why we need an additional loading dock? The other two that are already there can't be shared? I don't understand. Did you answer that question?
The two existing loading docks are specifically attached to the spaces for the two individual tenants, and there isn't a way to really connect them in a way that would be usable loading dock area. So that's why we're proposing it in this location on the side of the building to, to feed that particular space.
The loading docks is proposed are directly accessible, the loading dock that's proposed is directly accessible to the vacant space.
To the vacant space. This cannot be connected because of the tenant that's here, and this tenant is right in this area. So there's no way to feed this front area.
But I just said, we have problems located on the map also. If you can point.
On the corner.
Yes, on the corner. And that's, I did see trucks idling there.
Yeah, and that, and there is a sign here, and there's going to be more signage in this area.
And you're doing slats down there too, right?
Yes, slats entirely.
And you gotta fill in additional auto buddy as you mentioned.
Yes.
In that corner, can we put more by the Fox Landing condominium to fill that in a little bit?
Ready, down here?
Yeah.
It's really narrow in that area. I'm, I'm not gonna say absolutely not because I don't know. Possibly.
So you work with staff to see if you can fill in those areas?
Yeah.
With some sound additional, in addition to-
Couple of our buddy, buddy in that area, if it's wide enough to do.
Oh, wide, you mean, you know?
Okay. Um, we'll, we'll have to look at that because there may be, as Ethan was just saying, there may be a wall in that area, but we could, we would accept a condition that we work with staff on maybe seeing if we could do something in, in this area similar to what we're, we're proposing along here. Typically, I think, we're collecting our buddy, it's like five feet.
Just a follow-up question in terms of the, the no idling signs.
Yes.
How long has the no idling signs been up?
So it was after the 2018 meeting, so probably maybe a year. Does that seem about right?
Any other comments from the public?
I'm Andrea Walk, and I live at 192 Pine Street. I actually abud the Dieter's property, but there is space between our properties, so the yards, you can see through the yards. So my comment or concern would be the new loading dock where the trucks are backing in, and I realize they want to put the light manufacturing in. So Millifor, which is light manufacturing, they have a lot of trucks. So I've been observing, I've been sitting out there, I've been watching. I've been doing this now for two years, by the way. So, and I know Linda's been doing it, and Steve's been doing it, and a few other people here have been doing the same thing. And I know there's other comments, I know people want to say things, but it's been snow removal, apparently they pay by the inch, so they're scraping parking lot, there's a lot of noise. If there's trucks that are able to back up, I know they want to put some trees and they want to put slats. My husband owns a fence company. I spoke to him, he can't make it tonight, but he said, Andrea, that's not gonna work. Slats are not gonna work. And if you speak to the Dieters and myself and the people that abud the backside, there's trees that have already grown into this particular space in the fence. If they're going to have a new tenant that'll probably pay a substantial amount of money to, to have this loading dock and this piece of, of business, they would pay for a new fence. Now Steve has already said that he would have assisted along with the people in his condo community, and probably the people in the condos that have budged the back of the, the fence, and including myself, to help everybody else, including my property, because I, I can see them backing up, I can see all the lights coming through by the way to my bedroom window, because Linda's windows are here and my windows are just behind hers. It's like, if they're willing to work with us, we'd put a great fence up, something a little bit more substantial than slats. And you guys don't live there, no offense, but you people don't live there, we live there. And the person that handled the community before, we could call her, she didn't even live in the state. So it's like, these people don't live here, they're, they're following up after the fact, and are we supposed to be calling the, the police when they're sitting in front of your house idling every single time? I mean, the police aren't gonna come sooner or later. They could, they put a kid last night, I called them at three o'clock in the morning when they were plowing nothing, or when they're, they're leaf blowing nothing, right? They're doing it to make money, which is great for them, but it's not great for the rest of the community. And by the way, I didn't buy the property when all that was going on, and neither did the Dieters. So that wasn't going on when I bought the property, and I realized that you want more money and another tenant, and that's great, and I feel bad for you, but you should feel bad for the rest of us because we have to put up with that. Not including that more trucks are gonna come through. We have young kids that live in that neighborhood, a lot of them, and someone could get hit by a truck. Are they paying attention when they're pulling over on the side of the road, not even knowing which exit or entrance to go into? They're not. And I know someone else can speak to this a little bit better than I can, but they have salt and sand sitting on their property where the plow people are coming in, and they're using it as like a waste station. So we can hear them all night long getting this, these products to take to other places. They don't even work for the, the Brookside or whatever they're called. They're just literally coming in, taking the salt and sand, and they don't even know this is going on, that's the funny thing. So they don't know a lot of what's going on, they don't even know how many tenants are in their building at this point. Now they're adding another tenant, and we're going to have to suffer, everybody in this room, and it's not fair. It really isn't fair. I, I, I love the fact that we can have more taxes and standards and help offset costs, but they don't want to pay for a fence. They put up a few signs, by the way. I would love for you to drive through the property before you make a decision. There's two signs I drove through the property, two. And, and you can ask Steve, the slats, you- And you can ask Steve, the slats, you can see through them. We don't need slats. We need a great fence, and they can pay for it. If they're gonna have another tenant come in, they can certainly pay for a fence. They haven't had a tenant in there for four or five years. Why not pay for a fence and make everybody else happy? I know they're talking about some plants and trees and whatever. Sooner or later, leaves are gonna fall off, trees are gonna fall down, and we're gonna have sun, you know, literally all night long. I mean, I saw a truck there at 11 o'clock the other night, and I don't know about the rest of you, and by the way, he was idling in the parking lot right in front of Linda's house, by the way. And I videotaped many times. My kids have videotaped from their bedroom windows. It's a little bit overboard, and I know why everybody's here. More people would have been here. Unfortunately, they got the notice last week, so a lot of more people can be here. So we're trying to represent them. I came from another meeting, and I have to go to another meeting. So I just hope that everyone here in the town is listening to us because it's not gonna be great. And I told them at the last meeting, I have two dogs, or I had two dogs, I have one dog now, and he barked one day at 7:30 at night, and the police will call on me. Really? Over a dog? Okay, so what about this? We can call the police till, you know, the day is long, right? Are the police showing up? No, they're not. Because they could care less at two or three o'clock in the morning when we're all being woken up, and it's just not fair. I shouldn't be woken up a house away from a parking lot because they have to back up at three o'clock in the morning when no one's in the parking lot. I know the rest of you wouldn't want to do that. I know where some of you live, actually, and I know that you don't live in a neighborhood like this where anybody's waking you up. You could hear a cricket. So it just, it really, it's actually irritating to me, the fact that they want to put another loading dock. Find another business to put in there, one that doesn't need a loading dock.
Nancy, do you want to address the concept of work with the abutters about for a fence?
I think that an attempt has been made to address a lot of issues that the abutters have had. And we do have a fence here now that we're willing to make additions to, to address the screening, and we're willing to do the same thing over here. This is an industrial site, and we think that the landscaping that's being proposed is going to be more beneficial. And the cost that's going into the landscaping is simply going to be more beneficial overall as these plantings grow. And it's a better, it's a better plan, it's a better layout based on what we heard back in 2018 as well as what we heard again last week. And just going ahead and putting in a fence, another fence along here or a fence along there, there is a fence, slats can work, that is typical for an industrial type of property. It is a buffer, and we are mindful. And we do try to police the property as much as we can, and we've made a commitment to continue to do that, and more with Gladys and her, and her staff. We did discuss it in the day and the week.
Sir, you next?
No, I'm sorry, this gentleman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board, fellow residents in the area. My name is Matt Newby. I'm an abutter at 53 Adams Street for the past 23 years, since 1997. We've lived with some of the Silvania traffic way back in the day when the building was vacant. There's new work that's been done and the current tenants in the building. I wanted to first of all say, I do see that there has been some improvement to the plan, take into consideration neighborhood concerns since we had the previous plan a couple of years ago. So thank you to Attorney McCann, Brookwood, and the architect team for listening to us at least to a certain extent since then. I know, if I could just step around real quick, the existing loading docks where they're at right now, the way that people get into them requires traffic to come in off of Adams Street. There's no physical way to get a truck into these spots except by coming in this direction. I am concerned about the increase in truck traffic in the facility. The truck route as proposed now has all the truck traffic for the new loading dock circling the entire property to get over here. A fair amount of that traffic is coming in from Route 14, it's passing the curb cut on Sylvan Street, if you look here, it's going past this, coming up around. I think with a little bit of minor modification, basically taking this particular section and nearing it over here, trucks could easily ingress off of Sylvan Street, back into the dock, and egress back out without affecting the entire neighborhood as they circle the I understand there's some benefit in having a uniform truck traffic pattern, but it affects the entire block when they come in and go all the way around. I disagree that directing traffic to the new loading dock completely around the block. I think that driver's confusion about which of the three docks to use may be mitigated with adequate signage, and a little bit of, you know, coming in and out over time, they'll get used to what the three is. Thank you.
My name's Rick Dieter. I live 188 Pine Street, direct abutter. I think we just heard the representative for the company kind of confirm what we've all kind of felt. They have their ideas and their plans, we gave our input, but they've ignored it. We've all kind of pretty adamantly said that a slat in the fence is really not gonna do it, but she says by their rights as an industrial zone, they can do this. Maybe that's so, but it's not very friendly to the abutters. We have our concerns, we understand they need that space filled, and we put our input in, but it seems like our input is just kind of to appease us at the need, not to actually help us to come to some agreement.
My name's Richard Delacour. I'm on 97 Sylvan Street, Route 3, Brookwood. It's a clear pro point about the plowing. Two years ago, there was no containers there. There's two huge containers there, full of sand. They're never there filling those containers, filling the trucks up, any time of the night during the snowstorm, anytime. Trucks are leaving there, go and put the sand elsewhere. So they're using that as a staging area. I think that's a little much. They'd sand your own place. First of all, the containers shouldn't even be there, and I saw. And the fence, to put the slats, it's a bandage, but the fence is in bad shape. It's in real bad shape. It's not gonna work. But a fence, if they can afford that, to buy that building, they can afford to put a fence on it. Simple.
Any one else, Mr. Duggan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Back to you, Doug, and tell me, you remember precinct one. Let's just try to be brief with this. So back on May 8th, 2018, in this very room, and with many of the same people, we're having the same conversation, it's deja vu all over again. And I know that the board members that were present that day, they had some valid concerns about the integrity of what the applicant was saying at that time. And I think tonight you should probably be having the same questions. The gentleman just spoke about a fence. You're talking about a cheap fence, and that's the remediation that's being proposed. There really needs to be something more substantial. The back of that property, especially since they tore down the two houses that were on Pine Street, that whole area back there just opened up the commercial area into the surrounding neighborhood. That should, that should have never been allowed. There needs to be something more substantial to delineate the break between the two zoning districts.
Anyone else not have a chance to speak yet before we go back? Yes, ma'am.
Just briefly, I'm Susan McDonald on 1867 Street. I really appreciate you guys reading my ethic tone, but I just want, I really just want to emphasize that, oh, first of all, give an update. This morning at 1:15 a.m., a truck screamed out of that parking lot, a tractor-trailer out from the loading dock area. So it's just another emphasis that the building isn't being managed. Maybe they're telling tenants that you can't do this, but they do it. So who's going to manage this? They're not managing the existing issues today, and the existing issues will be exacerbated by two new loading docks. How will that be managed? So you guys have my tone, I echo all the sentiments of the other abutters, and I just encourage you to really consider those. We know, we bought these properties, we knew that Sylvan was there. It was built in 1941, but many of the homes were there well prior to 1941. There was another influx of building around, say, the 50s, but there was always a nice kind of vibe. It doesn't exist anymore. I mean, I think the abutters feel well disregarded by Brookwood. So you have my tone. Thank you.
Anyone else have, not have a chance to speak? Sir, you had a follow-up?
Again, Steve Castaneda, 174 Pine Street. Attorney McCann mentioned that she's concerned about the amount of space they have around the fence behind the townhouses, the landscaping. I manage Oxland Condominium Trust. I'd be willing to speak to our membership and find out if they would have a problem with us using our property if they want to put our abutties up on our property just to cover the fence, the chain link fence that they have up there right now. And I don't think it would be a problem. I think everybody would be more than happy to see something more substantial, I guess we'd say, because the slats, whether she says they're gonna put bigger slats in or not makes no difference. Drive by, stand 30 feet away from that fence, you can see right through it like those slats weren't even there. And I don't care if you have another half an inch, it's not gonna make much more difference. So I would like to see a commitment from Brookwood before this project is approved, and I'd be more than happy to work with them to do that. Thank you.
Okay, I think we've, anyone else? I think we've heard from almost everyone that wanted to speak in the public. So let me bring it back to the board. Does any of the board have questions, concerns? Sir?
I think it's great that the abutters want to work with the applicant. I don't want, I would not vote for any condition from the board to have them put any plantings on a private property. It opens up a can of worms, as far as I'm concerned. I understand the abutters' issues, and I think it's great, and I would encourage them to talk, but I don't think that the board should, I won't vote to pass something like that as a condition to require them to do that. But I think it's, I think it's a great idea if they do discuss it. I'd like to know where these storage container units are, because they're not marked on the, they're not marked on the, by the plan anywhere and they need to be. There's specific things in our zoning force, storage containers instead of use.
Yes. This is, you came up at the meeting last Wednesday, that there was salt and sand in, salt and sand containers, not what you might consider in the bylaw. That are in this back area here, and the comments that were made, and we heard them again tonight, that the plowing contractor was coming in and filling the truck and then leaving to go to another site. He was called immediately the next morning and was advised, that can't happen. That was not something that Brookwood was aware was happening. There is, and it's not uncommon to have salt and sand containers temporarily during the winter in large parking lots. That's not unusual. But it's for that parking lot. And that was the understanding that Brookwood had, that was what was going on, that the trucks would come in to say, this is a large parking area, it's like 300,000 square feet of parking lot that has to be plowed here. And so that was the understanding is that that was what it was used for. We were made aware of that last Wednesday, and Thursday morning, the landscaping company who also does the plowing, and they are new, was told that can't happen. So that's being addressed.
That's all I have, no? Okay, I'll let, I'll let the other board. Any other? Daniel?
I'd like to see the board table any vote on it until some kind of, an agreement can be reached with these abutters, because it seems like the common denominator here is the fencing. And I have to defer to the abutters when they say that the slats are insufficient because they're the ones that live and deal with it and experience the consequences of these trucks coming in. With respect to the gentleman who lives on Adams Street, I don't know about that proposal of changing the lane of the trucking. My only concern is, of course, the backup signals on commercial trucks are extremely loud and obnoxious for the reason, just to get your attention, so you'll get run over. But if a truck backing up, and the flip side of that is that if you live near a site that has trucks that keep backing up, then you get more and more of that. So that, of course, is a concern. I would hope that those, you know, it doesn't address Adams Street, but those that live along Pine Street, where those seem to be the greatest, that are affected by the noise, that a more improved fence, I don't know, I'm not a fence guy, but it's kind of something out there that everyone can live with, different design plans, and I would, I'd like to see that, I'd like to see what happens. It doesn't seem like it's that complicated. It doesn't, it seems like that would probably solve most of the abutters' concerns, not all of them, I don't, but that's all I can say about it.
Yeah, I would echo the same thing as now, my distant cousin. We gotta do something about the fence. I think the board members can go look at the leisure, but I think Josh can go with staff, perhaps even the engineer and attorney and see what they can get for, I'm not sure how much fence we need, but if we're definitely going to be upgrading, I think, once we pass that hurdle, I think I'd be satisfied moving forward.
I agree, something's gotta be done, but some type of fence is better, although I think landscaping is a good buffer. I was thinking two thoughts, and I could be wrong, I can't remember Attorney McCann, but don't you have to have so much of a buffer between industrial and residential?
This is an existing grandfathered site.
I mean, there's a buffer, just on the property line in general, but I don't...
This is a grandfathered site.
There's a grandfather, I think that... I have had concerns on Pine Street and where the Dieters live, because I have gone out there. As far as the new condos on Pine Street, I remember at this meeting making sure or getting assurance that the landscaping that was at the back of the property was an adequate buffer. I don't know if the landscaping has died out there or what, but I remember when they came before us, we always addressed landscaping and buffer. But that being said, it would be nice if something could be done some way, somehow. I agree with Bill, we don't have to, the board can't get involved in that. But that area on Pine Street, we always seem to, and rightly so, addressing the condos on Sylvan Street, but that area on Pine Street also is impacted, and there's a way to do landscaping, better fence along the whole perimeter and over there, then I think that should resolve. It should resolve that.
Hello? Yeah? As things currently stand, I think I'll, you know, stay with those who are in favor of table for the moment until just, I think, as I, I think that the Brookwood's done very well in terms of, you know, from where you were in 2018, but again, mind you, you know, the application was withdrawn in 2018, so you're, you know, you're... you, you know, the application was withdrawn in 2018, so you're, you know, you're back here. And I think, though, that there's, there are issues that, that still need to be resolved, you know, with the abutters as it relates to, as I mentioned, like relates to landscaping, also as it relates to the operations. And, you know, and I understand that that signage has gone up, but I think still that, you know, some more has to be done, some more conversations have to be done with the, with the abutters. As I said, I think that the plan itself, I mean, I could, you know, in terms of looking at the plans, and again, with some additional work with respect to landscaping and potentially fencing, you know, I could ultimately, you know, there'd be a time where I could support it, but at least as things stand right now, I wouldn't be able to support it because of the, just because of the concerns of the abutters.
Yeah, I have the same concerns around, and I think it's great that the abutters want to play, in fact, more so than I've seen in any other application where the abutters are really wanting to make a personal or financial commitment potentially to help out, so I would encourage those conversations as well. I did go through that property over the weekend, it is pretty tight, you know, I wouldn't want to be responsible for driving those trucks. I thought it was pretty tight. I kind of like the idea, is there another way to get those trucks in, regardless of coming through Adam Street, but if that's not feasible, you know, Josh, you know, I'd welcome your input on that. It seems logical, instead of coming all the way around the building, but I do think, you know, more conversations need to take place before we're prepared to move on this.
You just mentioned it, Mr. Chairman, and I think at least one person who was speaking mentioned, if we're talking about working with abutters and additional fencing, because in fact, there is a fence, and we're proposing to put slats in it to make it opaque, but there is a fence, and that fence has been there and has delineated this site for many, many years. Is, and perhaps through you, Mr. Chairman, I can ask whether there is in fact a willingness toward a financial contribution for the fencing from the abutters?
Well, I don't, I'm concerned, I feel what Bill's saying, that can we mandate that? I don't think we should mandate that, but I think you...
No, I'm not asking you to mandate it. I was just asking, because it was mentioned by, by at least one person who was speaking, and you just mentioned it a second ago, so I just want to kind of flush that out. Is that, is that what we're, what we're talking about?
I would personally not object to that. Any other members of the board, if an abutter wanted to make a contribution?
I wouldn't have a problem, but we'd have to be talked between the abutter and the applicant, outside of our arrangement.
We can't require outside improvements. But I would think that typically, I mean, if someone had an issue, they could put their own fence up.
Yes.
We do landscaping, too.
Right. In addition to what we're proposing, but I guess we have to see what the current state of fence is versus, you know, is it worth salvaging, it doesn't sound like it, versus replacing it with something that's better.
Sorry, if I may, drove the site myself and my coworker who presented in front of the board in 2018, drove the site last week after the abutters meeting, as well as I went back to the site before this meeting. There definitely are some light growth through the side fence, but I think my opinion would be that the fence along the southern, southern property line, in terms of a chain link fence, is in fine condition to install slats. It's not, it doesn't appear to be structurally unsound. There is minor growth, but on both sides.
It's a minor doubt, but tends to grow a lot more in the spring, so.
And I, I mean, I can't speak to that, because I haven't visited the site in terms of heavy growth, but that would be my opinion in terms of the couple site visits that I have had in the past.
Can I ask a question? Have you slept in the bedrooms of the abutters on Pine Street when the chain link fence comes in with the lights on? Because that's what they were saying. They were saying about what it looks like from the inside the parking lot, looking towards their houses, they're talking about what they're receiving inside their bed.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, we gotta be careful. Yeah, we gotta be a little careful, not waste rest of the budget. I understand your point, but we gotta be careful.
Just a question, I think what I, and I may be mistaken, but I think what some of the abutters are saying is not necessarily that the chain link fence was in, you know, was in poor condition, although that may be true, but I think was that, that there'd be another type of fencing would be more effective. I think that's what they were, they were looking at. Would you be all more, would you be receptive to, to perhaps to replacing that fence with fencing that could be more, again, working with the neighbors, that could be more, you know, that could be more sound insulating or light insulating, something like, than a chain link fence? That was more the question I had.
And I, I understand your question, and we're going to have to look into that, because of course it's going to come down to the cost associated with it. We're proposing a lot of landscaping. That may not be the case if there's fencing that goes in.
Well, you're still 10% deficient on the landscaping, so you're still requesting a waiver of the 30%, so I'm not sure you can use that as a carrot and stick, because you're woefully, I mean, you are under 30%.
We are, we are certainly under 30%.
So if you show me 30%, then you're gonna have that argument.
Well, we are, again, dealing with an established site.
But you're in front of us, the whole site is built before review.
Oh, I understand that, but that's what I'm trying to weigh here. If we look at the cost, you've asked us to try and deal with the fence concern. That has been the directive that I'm hearing from, from the board. And what I'm trying to figure out is, we proposed arbivitae along here, something's got to get somewhere, and I'm just asking if we, if we come up with a different option on the fence, we may not be looking at all the arbivitae.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, the other, the consideration between the balance between the fencing and the landscaping, and as a follow-up to the abutting, the abutters meeting last week, we, our opinion, or my opinion, was that the money was best spent as a landscaping island here, if you can see this side view and as is included in your packets, this landscaped island is really a lot closer to the proposed loading dock, which if you think about light kind of traveling up and out from a beam, this landscaped island will do far more than a six, eight, even maybe 10-foot better quality fence along the, more, more shielding along the line. I mean, at the end of the day, this, this light is going to come up at an angle, and so really the, the idea behind this large landscaped island with significant plantings in terms of tree sizes was to knock that light down early, long before it got up to the height of some of the second and third floor bedrooms.
The lights are coming from the existing loading docks?
I think the next step, would the applicant agree to continue this to the next meeting, take the feedback, and come back and talk to the planning staff and the wood?
Absolutely, sure. And perhaps, and we can, I'll just say it here since everybody can hear, if we can have someone designated to speak to, for the abutters, that might be helpful for us, as opposed to trying to reach out to literally on the assessor, you know, the abutters list, we've got 100 or so on here.
We have one volunteer, right?
Steve. I think you really need two.
Yeah, no, I agree.
One for my side, and one for the other side.
Yeah.
Would you like to volunteer for the Adam Street side of the equation?
I'll consider it.
Okay. But I think that's a good idea.
When's your next meeting?
24th.
24th, I would say we would request to continue and spoke the meeting after that.
Which is April, April 14th?
Yeah, we could modify that. Yeah, we could, why don't we just make a motion that we're going to change the action date to pass that April 14th, the April 14th.
I move we continue this hearing until, maybe of April 14th, 2020, with an action date by April 17th, 2020.
There's a motion, a second. Any discussions? Follow in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So for the audience, it's being continued to April 14th.
So who are our volunteers? Anybody else? This side?
Sylvan Street.
The Sylvan Street, not Sylvan Street side.
You know, I think Andrea probably would do it, but she got a little bit of a reading.
Okay, she's been in touch with us.
She lives on that side, and I think that'd be more appropriate to have somebody who lives on that side.
So you two, we will reach out to you and Andrea.
I can give you both numbers, too, I have.
Could you, if you don't mind, we got at the back, no, that's fine, we just, if you, if you have your mind out, the car is out of the frame.
Thank you very much for listening to us.
So the next agenda item is a general discussion around zoning regulations, which, Josh, that was the 86-page document.
Yes, that was our favorite, favorite match of page meeting. It is, it is our board, David's planning board, zoning regulations. So, David, David put this together, he was hoping that we would accept them or approve them tonight, just because we, well, like, a lot of them are associated with a lot of the downtown stuff, it was recently, or a town meeting in the design stuff. If there were any questions or concerns, or if I could set these modifications to make, we're happy to do that. These are our regulations, so if we're learning, or something, something just up, and someone finds something that we'd like to modify or change, because they're our regulations, they don't have to go to a town meeting, so. If this completely didn't change, and if you get it, it's not difficult, it's way than six months, you know, a town meeting to do.
Big picture, I read it. I didn't have a problem, but I want to get some feedback from other people who have been at this one, and they're like, yeah.
They're very technical and have a design.
I read it, I did read it, as I told Josh, I probably concentrated more on the first 30 pages, because I did the rest of 94. But I found that most of the, the ending, the, sorry about that, I don't know what's going on with this case, it was more the design, as we went through on Maple Street overlay and on the downtown crossing. So, I thought it was, it was a good way to, not combined, they were concisely put, and I, I thought it was good to have this type of regulation. I found one typo, it was page 24 or something, I was really a book, so. I think, I was pleased with it, I think it's something that we need to do. And the neat thing, as Josh says, because of our regulations, we don't have to go through town meeting, and that holds.
Other comments, concerns?
Yeah, I had a chance to go down to a big picture, go review of it, I felt that it was, I mean, it was very comprehensive. I did have just one, one question, I guess this is just a, in terms of, just so I can understand it right, I think it was page 25, and it was dealing with the, like, franchises, so if you had a, sort of like a franchise, franchise storefront?
Sure.
That is not, that's not, that would be not allowed. So would that mean, for example, like, for a, we wouldn't see a McDonald's like we see on High Street, but we'd see a McDonald's like you see in Free Court.
Sure, yes, I think that is, that is the motivation for what we're trying to do.
And I know this was probably discussed at that last meeting a little bit, in terms of requests for waiver of that, I mean, of any of the sort of design elements in session, how would that?
We didn't get into that.
Okay. And the only other last thing, there was one, there was a real minor nip, I think it was page 91.
You got to page 91?
Yeah, there's a reference to city council.
Oh, okay.
Which probably should be part of the law.
Yes, yes. No, we'd appreciate any feedback or any, obviously, we're not going to decide, it's going to be things like that.
So what I would suggest, Josh, whatever would change, and if you, you know, we've got so many lawyers on this, you know, they understand yellow, redlining changes, so we don't have to go through the whole doctrine.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Yeah, if anyone, if anyone...
Just send it to you.
Send it, send it to staff, or send it to me, if I have any kind of errors or typos or that would be, obviously, we want it to be accurate and correct, so we're happy for the feedback.
Thank you.
This side of the table?
Yeah, again, the only thing I would suggest is, as a practical matter, trying to deal with a 94-page document, it's going to be kind of, a bit, we'll lead for the board along with staff and applicant, so we talked a little bit about last meeting, dealing with minutia and dealing with what is the, what is the standard or threshold for staff administrative review versus...
Discretionary, essentially.
Yeah, I mean, you know, because if you get a lot of these, and you're going to get bogged down by, you know, and throughout the process, you're going to make an applicant who's building something come back, maybe we're open meeting, and they may have to wait four weeks to come back, as a practical matter, that's going to stymie development and, and are the things that we'd be comfortable with the board, you know, seating control of just for, you know, this sign versus this sign, and this texture versus that texture. How, how, you know, when they come in for the first visit and their first proposal, are we going to get down to that level of detail?
I mean, I think it's up to the group, I feel, this is sort of, is kind of staff-heavy and that's what the board...
Well, I think that's what the board is meaning to us, right? I don't think I need to get into that level of detail.
But we haven't, we haven't set up any thresholds.
Yes, I know, that's a good point.
Maybe it's a situation where we move forward with this, and we feel like, you know, if staff is making those types of discretionary decisions, that just how it works organically over time, if projects come up that maybe the board wishes to be more involved with.
But I guess, generally, in what areas are we going to give you that, that authority? So, is it going to be things like design, color, you know, texture, versus, obviously, we may have the big stuff, the parking, the, you know, number of units, the size of it, the facade, how it looks within the, you know, neighborhood, the conceptual view and all that, but I mean, the smaller stuff.
Yeah, like...
You and the building inspector are going to deal with it.
Yeah, exactly, right, and that's kind of, I mean, I don't think that, even with the new downtown stuff, we'd necessarily have design review, but the buildings are going to look at this typology, and if no one designed it, zoning managers are talking about color, you know, but I don't think it's like that.
We want to know the color, believe me. We want to know the color right up front, because we've been surprised over the years at some funky colors, so banks and other institutions, so we want to know the color right up front. Therotones can mean a lot of things. So, that's all I have.
That's good feedback, sure. Bill?
I echo a lot of what Jim said, it's probably not a bad idea to look over the design. A lot of the design stuff, like the signage and things like that, can be done by staff, and maybe even have a certain section where it's denoted that staff would be the place to talk about this. I think it's a better idea than having an applicant bring all of the minutia in front of us that way. Other than that, I'd like to applaud Lou for finding something on page 91.
He's much more into looking at the minutia than I am, I guess.
That's good.
I'm just going to come right out and be honest and say, I'm glad that the rest of the board has more free time than I do.
It's time to look at one page. And when I open up a document that says it's almost a hundred pages, I look at it and I go, I don't have time. I always start going through it a little bit at a time. So I don't know when I'm going to have time, if I'm going to, but it's a daunting thing to ask volunteer group people to read over ninety pages of a document that's this technical. That's all I have to say.
Sorry, guys. So maybe the next step, Josh, is, you know, you give the feedback to David that, you know, big picture, it's a document that we like, okay, now we just got to make it workable. Can you just kind of summarize around upon this that Jim had is what's going to be delegated to the staff, okay, and what's coming to the fore? Because I think we should know that as the board, what we should expect. Because it's hard to figure it out.
Yeah.
So I think that should be the next step, and if we can just redline the recent changes that were talked about, maybe we got, we're in a position where we can vote on it officially at the next meeting.
Okay.
See reasonable?
It does.
I like the redlining. It's difficult when you go to a document that large, if you're trying to find changes.
It's almost like, it's almost like if you're, if you're coming in, for example, and I'm going to redevelop CVS, great. So I'm going to put two stories above CVS, and I'm going to put underground parking, and I'm still going to have CVS there, and I'm going to put some apartments up above. That in and of itself is kind of hard. I mean, sure, we can look at that, but as the big picture for the whole area, you know, you've got all kinds of things that you could do community-wide. Are we going to try to encourage a parklet? Are we going to try to encourage community space? You can't really do that one building at a time. So if you have a certain philosophy that you want to interject in the downtown, we have the Gioji building that's been torn down, that now is going to come into the fore as it's being constructed. We have the building on Logan Street, the ideal baby shoe build. Shouldn't we kind of meld, you know, if we want to have certain common areas, community areas, we need to kind of emphasize that for the first applicants. Because it's going to be hard to do a piecemeal. You can't, you're not going to be able to do it. You're going to say, well, this is what we're trying to drive downtown. We want to have this space where we'll have some trees here and some recreational areas or apartments here or there. You can't do it if you're doing, you know, one at a time. So how do we, how do we rank this out?
Okay.
What's the feeling of the board? What's the feeling of, you know, town? It's almost, you know, another, it's kind of another thing, you know, what do we want? We have the tools, but we're going to...
I mean, we've talked about, you know, having a park or a common. We've talked about, you know, various public realm spaces, things like that, but we, nothing's been formalized, so.
Well, you got hot wide, eleven buildings. They passed their tenement delay by law. They have a buyer.
Oh, they do.
Who's going to develop that whole site. It's in the works. So it's going to be interesting to see. There is this particular space of a certain amount of acreage that we can work with who are developing that whole site. So that's different than, you know, one millimeter, one millimeter. So how, you know, I think it's, if we can continue that theme and look at it all, you know, I think the building on Logan Street is going to, this is shaping up to look relatively nice, you know, once they finish the parking lot and do the stuff up front. I mean, looking at it from the back, it's pretty nice too. I don't know if you noticed it in the rear of the building.
Not much damage from the fire?
To a lot of fire.
Was it really?
Yeah, the holes for back.
Oh, wow, in the back.
Yeah.
But I just drove by, I saw the back, you know, probably for the fire, it looked pretty nice back there.
It is, it is nice. And I think they're doing a great job on it. But when was it, last Sunday or the Sunday before? Two Sundays before, yeah. I don't know what caused the fire, but it was, I think it was two, three stories. Not sure.
Just a, just a quick thought, just in terms of going back to, we're talking about, like, sort of, you know, delegating to staff, sort of, you know, certain things. But probably, I mean, just a thought as well, and I'm for certainly having staff delegate to, you know, really sort of the small picture items, but maybe if there's a way, then we can figure out, like, not so much even be involved in that, but maybe even like a recording, you know, non-recording requirement, but just so that staff reports on a periodic basis to the planning board in terms of areas where they have sort of acted under that authority, so that we at least can sort of keep a, keep a bit of a pulse on what staff is, has been dealing with and just so we can have, just so we can stay aware.
Sure.
So you put that as an agenda item at the beginning of the meeting under other matters or administrative?
Sure, I mean, a lot of times what I'd like is your summary memo. I mean, if there's certain things that you have done leading up to, before it gets to us, you can just kind of summarize it there too, Josh. Okay, that's a, that's a very useful document, at least from my perspective.
I like that.
Yes, exactly.
But now I wish that I had drawn out into the fence.
All right. So does that give you enough feedback on what we need to do?
Sure.
I mean, I think we all want to have a workable document. You know, David's anxious to get it going with, but I think it's a fine idea now.
Sure.
I guess the only other item that, it didn't show up specifically on the agenda, but the regulations on the DM's Board of Health.
Oh, so that's the, are you referring to the goats, the goats stuff?
Animal hospital?
Yeah, so animal hospital tree, we are going to open, I guess it's kind of, we are going to open that item on also that April fourteenth meeting.
All right, so that's going to be an agenda item for the fourteenth.
Yes.
This is just giving us a heads up.
Well, it's, we, what, the item of, you know, ostrich is, what we're thinking about is bringing it to the town meeting.
Town meeting, all right, so they need a planning board position?
So the idea is, a recommendation from the board, the animal hospital tree is that we remove some of the, a decent amount of the language, our zoning bylaw, in the animal hospital tree, but then be regulated to the Board of Health. The only other kind of planning or zoning change that we made is it would be allowed in all residential zoning districts, but right now I think it's just residential two. We were just allowed by right, res one here, res three, just to be consistent.
So this document you want to discuss on the twenty-fourth and vote on the fourteenth, or are we trying to do it all on the fourteenth?
All on the fourteenth, yes.
Okay. Can I ask a question on that while we're talking about it?
This is?
Present twenty is typically, you know, ten thousand square foot lots. We want to encourage fifteen animals on a ten thousand square foot lot versus twenty or thirty thousand square foot?
I don't know if it's still the fifteen animal. I think the fifteen animal language has changed, but I have to look at that.
Well, I think it lets you have less than fifteen or partially appeal for more than fifteen. But do we want to encourage smaller lots, maybe fifteen animals, right? Just what was the mindset on that?
I think the macro level thought was initially was just all residential, just resident, not breaking into different residential script footage, but just residential one, two, and three, have that ability to do animals. But if the board has...
Subject to the board health, right?
Subject to the board health, still. If the planning board is not, is maybe not comfortable with allowing it to res one.
Wasn't the issue over in the area residence two?
There is an area residence more than that, so it's just water street.
I'm just thinking out loud, I mean, it just seems to be you're denser, much denser, smaller area, where your max or your lot size is ten, it could be even smaller than ten.
It could.
You know, and we're now going to, not necessarily encourage, but you're going to allow animals, fifteen animals on.
I could be, I guess my comment is, I haven't looked at the Board of Health new regulations, but I'm not sure if that fifteen number that you mentioned, I think is still the number that will be, you know, I don't know if there is a max or if fifteen's the max, so I'd have to look at, it might be the holder, what the, what's actually to that regulation. But we can, I can discuss with David tomorrow about maybe not residential, you know.
So we're going to have a public meeting, so I'm assuming people are going to be able to attend the meeting to comment?
Yeah, it's a public hearing.
And the goats?
One thing they did, I think they did change, and I hope it still does, is that the side setback for structure, like a chicken coop or something. Originally, someone said, I think in some places it was a feet or something, ten feet, but now it's going to have to comply with the zoning bylaw.
Oh, I see.
Which I think is appropriate.
Sure.
Yeah. Which means that whether res one has...
Right, they might not have a res one.
Yeah.
Okay. So was there anything else?
I do have one question about it. Is the Board of Health, have they commented on the regulations?
I think that they've been involved in putting them together.
Okay. That's all I'm worried about. Overall, I think it's got the fifteen coming.
All right. Any other business issues, Josh?
Or just, yeah, just, so it appears as we speak right now then that there will, unless we get an A and R between now and the twenty-fourth, but probably, we'll only have meetings to be turned up twenty-fourth. The fourteen, which we just discussed, we were planning on opening, potentially closing the zoning amendment on the fourteenth, we continue this item. And then on April twenty-eighth, we were likely to have a CBTC training similar to one that happened.
We do touch it, sir?
On the twenty-eighth.
The twenty-eighth is the last meeting of April.
Yeah. On, the topic will be site plan review.
Yeah, I thought that last training session, they did a nice job.
Is everyone going to be here on the fourteenth? I may have difficulty because I do a lot of task work.
I was supposed to be in Switzerland, but there seems to be a virus out there.
Right?
Yeah, and so it kind of looks like it's going to be postponed.
So I'm just, I'm getting you guys to all be here.
So I'll be here.
You may get a big leak from the federal government. If it has, they may kick the can on taxes too.
I'm going to get a little bit.
Yeah, there's no sense in delaying it. Okay. So the last item on the agenda, the minutes of the meeting of February twenty-fifth.
Move to accept the minutes, Ezra?
Second.
Any discussion? One in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No, you adjourn.
Second.
One in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.